My name's Dan Carney. It's once again my privilege to serve with these outstanding ladies and gentlemen. I serve as the chairman of this meeting of the Board of Trustees, Weatherford College, being held today, Thursday, October the fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, twelve thirty P. M. in the Community Room of the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building located at two twenty-five College Park Drive, Weatherford, Texas, to consider an act upon a posted agenda. I do call this meeting to order. Mr. Baker, would you perform an invitation?
I'd be happy to, sir. Please. About with me. Lord, we're thankful to you for everything we have. We're thankful to you for this college, for our students, for our faculty, staff, for our board members, volunteers, and donors. Thank you for bringing them all to us. We pray for our board today as they deliberate and for our college as we finish out a strong rest of the semester. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Grant. If you're able to stand, would you please rise and leave us in the place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May you see. Ms. Worley, do you have some folks who have signed up to make a comment?
Yes, sir.
No one today. All right. Very much. Item number three on the agenda is the president's report. President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions and employee notices. Recognizations: Congratulations to Weatherford College volleyball player Abby Morris, who recently won the National Offensive Player of the Week from the National Junior College Athletic Association. Weatherford College cowboy Mason Stevie recently won the men's all-around title at the Saul Ross State University rodeo. Congratulations, Mason. Volleyball, rodeo, and golf are all off to amazing starts this year. Our W C athletic programs continue to dominate. Go Coyotes! Employee notices: D M A C Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. Grace Rothrock, an instructor in mathematics, has announced her retirement effective one seven twenty-five. Terry Thomas, our acting director of financial aid, is retiring effective one thirty-one twenty-five. Ginger Chenault, a financial aid clerk, has resigned effective ten eleven twenty-four. And Gwen Crabtree, the director of our testing center, is retiring effective one thirty-one twenty-five. We thank Grace, Terry, Ginger, and Gwen for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Mr. Chair, that concludes the president's report.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. That brings us to item number four, the consent agenda and financial reports. I would call upon any board member that has a question or comment or observation about any of the items that have been posted, A through K. Does anyone have a remark or comment for staff about those items? About the only thing that I noticed on here that caught my interest a little bit was this item G on the cooperative contract quotation with regard to the solutions process makers software. Mr. Finley, would you stand for just a minute? Tell us a little bit about that and why you're excited about that.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. This is a platform that will integrate in with our year-to-year systems and automate transcript evaluations right now. That is a one-person job. You stay pretty busy all year long, manually entering transcript data into the system. So this will streamline it. It's going to help us increase advising. It's also going to help us increase success performance. It's going to help us get completers. We're excited about it.
I'm pleased to hear that, sir. Thank you very much. Another item that caught my attention was item number H on the agenda with regard to the acquisition of some new medical equipment and items that we have. Mr. Baker, I noticed that some of the funding for that is coming from one of our great donors, the Wiggs Foundation, once again.
That's right.
We have so many great donors, the Durant's, the Stewart's, the Wiggs, and so many. Can you tell us just a little bit about what that project is?
The Wiggs Family Foundation, as you know, gave a one million dollar gift two and a half, three years ago. That was, at the time, the largest cash gift in Weatherford College history. And it was earmarked for equipment for our nursing program. And so we've been steadily buying, with the help of Dean Kathy Boswell and her team, buying state-of-the-art equipment for the Don Allen Health Science Building. And of course, we've renamed the nursing department after the Wiggs family. But I believe that is at the tail end of those funds. And then the Wiggs family also gave even more money this past year as well.
Incredible. Thank you for those comments.
Yes, sir.
With those observations, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through K in their entirety?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
And all in favor, raise your hand, please. So approved. Item number five on the agenda is a consideration and possible action for the adoption of a new student center fee. Dr. Cantrell, tell us about this.
Yes, sir. To section one thirty point one twenty-three of the Education Code, Weatherford College Administration proposes establishing a new student center fee. This student center fee will assist in offsetting costs associated with constructing, operating, maintaining, and equipping the new student center and the adjoining supporting facilities found by the board to be component to the student center. The fee is recommended to be charged at a rate of two hundred and fifty dollars per student beginning with the spring twenty twenty-five semester. This fee will be waived for students taking only dual-credit classes. We're doing this at this time because we will start registering in a couple of weeks. And when we do that, we have to have all fees set. And so this is a new fee in anticipation of starting the new building next year, in twenty twenty-five, and has to be in place in order to be counted when the state looks at us for approval of our bond that we have revenue coming from this.
Any members of the board have a question for Dr. Cantrell or comment? All right. I'll call for a motion in a moment. The motion that I think the wording that needs to be utilized is that the Board of Trustees approve the adoption of a student center fee beginning with the spring twenty twenty-five semester at a rate of two hundred and fifty dollars per student and waiving this fee for students taking only dual-credit classes. The board would further find that the parking facilities to be constructed on the main campus constitute a supporting facility to the student center. It is considered a necessary facility for the student center. That having been stated, do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Appears to be unanimous. So approved.
Thank you.
Item number six on the agenda, we move to President Farmer's reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Included in your packet are our standard W C W C Academics and Student Services update as well as the Annual Access and Affordability Report and the Annual Clearing Act Report. Agenda item six D, we have our honor societies with us here today, and we are very proud of them. At this time, I would invite our Dean of Humanities and Sciences, Dr. Lauren Tidwell, to the microphone. Our Weatherford College Honor Societies report to Dr. Tidwell as dean. And prior to joining W C, Dr. Tidwell served in the United States Army as a drill sergeant and paratrooper, and she led special forces through Afghan villages during a time of war that almost prepared her to supervise our honor students. I also see our honors advisors in the audience and, most importantly, our honor students. Thank you all for being here today. Dr. Tidwell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Board of Trustees, for your support of the Phi Theta Kappa and the National Society of Leadership and Success. These are the honor societies that are represented here today. I first want to say thank you to Dr. Eby for setting the bar high with his active involvement and support of the honor societies over the years. Also, thank you, Dr. Irojaga and Dr. Eby, for entrusting these organizations to my leadership as another opportunity for me to grow. I would like to highlight that these organizations are led by students for students. Your continued support of these societies provides academic leadership and community relations events that empower our students to truly go far. At this time, I would like to ask that if there are any students who are members of P T K or N S L S, would you please stand to be recognized?
Thank you, guys, for being here. We appreciate seeing your smiling faces.
Please stay standing. Board of Trustees, administrators, faculty, and staff, if you were a member of P T K or N S L S as a student, please stand. Students, I hope you can appreciate that the leaders among you were once in your shoes. I hope you can also envision yourself one day in theirs. Susie Jerry and Dr. Laura McBride will now share a brief update on the growth and opportunities in P T K and N S L S. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. I'm Susie Jerry, and I'm faculty advisor with Phi Theta Kappa, P T K, our Phi Chapter. We also have Sharon Johnson, who's also a faculty advisor. Standing next to me is Ian Marquez, president of our Phi Chapter this year, and Kevin Correio, who's vice president this year. And so moving on into our slideshow so we can be efficient, but P T K was established in nineteen eighteen, and it is in thirteen thousand community colleges and also in eleven nations. And P T K fulfills the organizational goals of Weatherford College by embracing a culture of excellence and fostering success of its students. I'll try to move it myself. So twenty twenty-three, we had a hundred and forty-nine new members. New members in twenty twenty-four, a hundred and eleven. The fall semester is just getting started for enrollment, so we'll be sending out reminders and invitations because we'll have an induction, hopefully November tenth, at the Altec. Our current membership since January twenty twenty is nine hundred and three students. Finishing what has started, a hundred and thirty-five students graduated at W C with multiple degrees and certifications, spring, summer, fall, and twenty twenty-four. Ninety-one percent of P T K members complete their associate degree and are transferred to a four-year college or university. Based on a study of fourteen thousand P T K members nationwide, we're comparing it to that, compared to the national success rate of thirty-nine, we're doing really good. Go Coyotes! All right. Leadership volunteer opportunities, and I must say, Kevin and Eby were essential in our success last year, and they stepped up to take officer roles this year. They participated in Welcome Week. We had Visibility National Night Out with our W C police, Casino Night, Mardi Gras, Trash Art Contest, Parker County Animal Shelter donations and adoptions. That was our president's college project last year. We did an awareness speaker series on mental health, fentanyl, and also human trafficking. And I just wanted to say, it's not up there, but we won, the W C Phi Chapter won the College Project Award of Merit that was last March twenty twenty-four at the P T K Regional Conference. So again, go Coyotes! It's up there. There it is. And Dana Orban acknowledged for ten years of service from the P T K National Office. And here are some pictures of us with President Farmer when we were talking about our college project last year, our very successful pet donations and adoptions, and our induction at the Altec last spring. And with that, I say thank you, but I did bring some items. We are doing our Trash Art Contest again this year. And then I also wanted to share this. We put this together with Dr. Eby and all three honors college, N S L S, and P T K. So it's a one sheet about the honors opportunities at Weatherford College. So I'll leave these for you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to present.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Dr. McBride, and I am one of the co-advisors for the National Society of Leadership and Success. My colleague is Dr. Vishnu Chwan Basu. I'm going to briefly show you some numbers, but I'm going to let the most important people talk to you today. So since our inception in twenty twenty-one, and by the way, N S L S was brought to Weatherford College by Dr. Alex Eby. He's our advisor-at-large and now overseeing by Dr. Tidwell. We have a thousand-plus members that have been inducted and, I'm sorry, a thousand-plus members that have joined and almost two hundred members that have been inducted. Our motto is stay close, go far, start today, lead tomorrow. And that's exactly what we're doing with these students. To earn induction in our honor society, students have to complete a series of leadership training. So they have to have a two-point-seven-five GPA and complete at least twelve hours of college credit. When they come to our service, they take this leadership training in the form of orientation, Leadership Training Day, success networking, team membership drives and get-togethers, and then speaker broadcasts. Once students have completed all these steps, they are then inducted. But they cannot be fully inducted until they complete every bit of this leadership training. So they truly do put the time in. We do like helping as well. We love it. Our N S L S students are a part of all kinds of things, such as Safe Halloween, food drives, campus cookouts, and this year, we're looking forward to being part of the turkey drive. We're very excited about that. Students have said that since they've joined N S L S that they have acquired better study skills, new study skills. They're also more outgoing. They like working with other people. They like working in collaborative projects. And overall, they attribute their college experience to a much healthier outlook, a brighter outlook, and they leave here with confidence and esteem, ready to lead projects that they never thought were possible before. But I'm not really what's important today. Today, we're going to talk to our president, Aislinn Rutter, and our vice president, Alehandra Ruiz. And let me tell you, they have done an amazing job. These two ladies are literally running everything. We don't even need to be here, except for here they are.
Thank you, Dr. McBride. My name is Aislinn Rutter. I am the student president of the N S L S. My role in N S L S is to guide new students and new members with their orientation, their Leadership Training Day, success networking teams, and our induction ceremony. I try to be as available as I can for any questions that they have, any concerns, if they need to make up any kind of events that they miss. I always go out of my way to make sure that they always get those done. I believe it's super important for all of our students to be involved in N S L S because it gives them an opportunity to connect with other students that have the same goals that they do in their careers and leading.
My name is Alehandra Ruiz, and like she said, I'm the student vice president. My job as a student VP is to accompany Aislinn and assist her in any way that I can for any events that we run, making sure everything runs smoothly. I also try to make myself available for any student questions that may arise. I'm on the White County campus, so I try to help those students as much as I can since I'm closer to them already. When joining N S L S, one of the primary things we're showing is setting a bunch of smaller goals to help you reach your big ultimate goal. And that has, since learning that, it's changed my mindset, and it's taught me to take smaller steps to attain my big goal rather than just focusing on the big picture and getting overwhelmed.
Thank you, ladies, and we appreciate you taking the time to meet with all of us today.
Thank you all.
If I could encourage all of our students and our advisors and Dean Tidwell, we're going to break here in about three minutes to go to closed session. If you could come up and get a photo with the Board of Trustees, we would really appreciate
Ms. Tidwell, would you stand up? We want to thank you for your service to our country.
Amen.
President Farmer, do you have any other items under number six?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll move to item number seven, future agenda items or meetings, and this is also a call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next month, we will be bringing to you the annual Equities in Athletics Report. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Item number eight, announcements, Mr. Brick Baker.
Yes, sir. It's a packed month. I'm going to hit the highlights for you, but you have this information in your packet. Tonight, there's an art show in the Altec Fine Arts Center, The Art of Richard Suckup. You may have seen his work in our Speaker Jim Wright Library, and that'll be at five thirty tonight. Multiple volleyball matches coming up, and as you probably heard, our team is number six in the country. There's a graduation ceremony Friday for our public service groups. Is that the Altec, Dr. Y, the graduation?
Yes, it should be.
At the Altec.
Let me look.
And if you'd like more information, Dr. Y can give you that. We have several concerts coming up. Our Jazz Orchestra, A Night of Song, this coming Tuesday night at the Altec Center. We have a ribbon cutting for our alumni house. The Weatherford Chamber of Commerce is bringing their ambassadors, and we'd love to have you there as well. That'll be held on October twenty-fourth. That same night is opening night for the Fall Musical at the Altec, Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde. That will be running through the twenty-seventh of October. Safe Halloween, where our campus police have worked so hard on this event. Five to seven thousand kids will be here that night. That'll be in our north parking lot the evening of Halloween, of course. Dr. Song has a concert on November the first, Songwriters Forum on November the fourth. Our Scholarship Donor Appreciation Dinner for the foundation is Thursday, November seventh, new location this year that'll be at Canyon West for the first time. And we'd love to have you there, board members. Please let Michelle Owens know if you can be there. And the Baseball Booster Club has a Sporting Clay Shoot fundraiser that will be held on November eighth as well.
It will be in the Altec.
Thank you very much, Grant. That brings us down to item number nine, where we will enter into a closed session on real property matters and employee matters as are stated in the posted agenda. So we will be in recess at twelve fifty-three for that purpose.
Okay, the time now is 1:51 PM. This is continuation of the board meeting for October the 10th, 2024. We have emerged from our closed session on real property matters and employee matters, and we are now down to item number 10, consideration and possible action on some real property matters. And I think that we have three distinct matters to take up. And I've asked Vice Chairman Dowd to present motions on those matters, and we'll take them up one at a time. Mr. Dowd, would you make your motion for the first of those real property matters?
Yes, Chair, happy to do so. Make a motion that the board approves the purchase of 11.51 acres on Martin Drive across from the Kingsley Building and next to College Park Rehab and Care Center for the negotiated contract amount of $3,250,000 to be paid out of unrestricted reserve funds.
Thank you for that motion. Is there a second to Mr. Dowd's motion?
Second.
All in favor, would you raise your hand, please? Appears to be a unanimous vote. It is so approved and passed. You have a second motion, do you not, Mr. Dowd?
I do. I make a motion that the board approve the purchase of 2.5 acres on the corner of East Park Street, Sloan Street, just west of the Alumni House, also known as 205 East Park Street and 207 East Park Street, for the negotiated contract amount of $780,000 to be paid out of unrestricted reserve funds.
And is there a second to Mr. Dowd's motion in that regard?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Appears to be unanimous approval, so approved. We have a third motion, do we not, Mr. Dowd?
I do. I make a motion that the board trustees authorize the administration to solicit competitive sealed proposals under RFP 01-25 on the sale of real property for 45.682 acres of land consisting of two non-contiguous tracts of land located on West Beebe Fielder and South Main, just south of Interstate 20 within the city limits of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, 76087.
And that is your motion, sir?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second as to this motion?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Appears to be a unanimous approval of that motion, so approved. That takes us down to item number 11 on the posted agenda with regard to possible action on appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee. We have no action items under that topic here today. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor, we are adjourned.